Here, we have, that's our roll call. And now it's time for the open forum. So if anyone has anything they want to address the council for, this is the time to do it. Come up and identify yourself and go for it. I think, I think this is it, this is good, yeah.
My name is Corey Riden. I, I pulled my boat out at the Coast Guard Station this year because I couldn't get it, that other bina wasn't open over there. So I guess what I'm here for is to ask for permission if it can stay where it's at, next to the Coast Guard Station. I'm going to pay the fees just like I would if I was parked over at the rec park. But I just couldn't pull it out over there this year. It wasn't ready.
Right. Is that our place to do that?
Most of the property. I'm not exactly sure if the boat's 100% owners or not.
I mean, I talked, I talked to, when I stopped in there, they said to talk to Lenny and stuff, about snow removal. He said, everything on that end of the, is all wide open. He said, he goes, he just leaves this end. I mean, I can move it away from the Coast Guard Building if you don't like it where it's at there. But I just, they wanted me to, I'm almost 15 feet wide, so it's hard to go through town.
Right. I mean, I don't see a problem with it. I don't, I don't know. Are there any logistical things we need to know? Do we have, Chris, is he not coming today?
If we want him to, I'm having an audio issue, so he can call if he has anything to interject.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess it's probably not a thing for him, anyway.
We, we are in the business, right, of storing boats. We usually just put them in wherever we can put them in the rec park property already. So the only real issue here is that it's in ours point parking lot, so.
Seems like a temporary solution for the fact that that, that isn't finished.
And then, I mean, I'm, I'm available by phone if you need, if you guys discuss it afterwards and something changes or whatever, you can get ahold of me.
I mean, I, I was going to say, do you think it's safe there? But I guess you don't really have much of an option.
It's as safe as it's going to be anywhere. I, I got camera on it, so.
Okay, cool.
And I'm not plugged into the Coast Guard Station or anything like that either, so.
Can we just, can we just kind of like say, all right?
Sure, yeah, no.
I mean, we don't need to have a motion for something like this. This is basically.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, and if something changes, just get ahold of me.
Yeah, totally.
Okay?
All right, thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
I saw that out there and I was kind of wondering, I was like.
Yeah, we're going to pull it through town and then I figured, okay, well, I'll call up, see if we can get an escort because the roads are so narrow now. And then they came, sent a gated permits and.
It's just easier to put it out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Greg.
Oh, yeah, you need anything over 10 feet.
Okay, so, anybody else for the open forum? No? All right, so then we will move along to the consent agenda. Consent agenda has the typical three items on it. This meeting's agenda, previous meeting minutes, and the approval of bills since the last meeting. Unless someone would like to pull something for discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Well, we're here until we have a motion, so, sorry.
All right, so there's just bills, there's nothing else this time, right? No others, or something other? Okay. I make a motion too.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second, discussion on consent agenda. There are none, all in favor? Aye. Say aye.
Aye.
And then, see, it's harder when there's only three of us, because then all of us actually have to say it. Otherwise, we can't tell. Opposed, nobody opposed, consent agenda carries. Next thing we have is the racial equity land acknowledgement update. So, Councilor Sullivan, come on up. You can give us a summary of this and be interested to hear how things are progressing with this.
Absolutely. Well, I'd like to thank you all for inviting me. And Tracy, maybe you want to talk a little bit before I begin about why you asked me to come here?
Oh, well, actually, I think it's because you offered that if we wanted to hear more. We did just briefly, you know, but once we knew you were coming, then I said, we won't talk about it much because you'll have the full, full update to know how that's going. So, I thought it was all best coming from you.
All right, sounds good. Well, and I'm glad that Andrea's here. Andrea, you can come up and join me and.
Ooh, wow!
Woo! So, one slide before that. There we go. So, just to give you a little background, last spring, there was a relatively large group of people who got together as part of our community leadership group. Formerly called Joint Powers, but we really didn't have any powers, so we referred to ourselves as Community Leadership Group. And we wanted to focus on a lot of different things. And we talked about housing and the need for housing. We talked about racial equity and decided we needed some committees or subgroups because we really needed time to dive into these greater issues. So Dan Shirley, Dave Mills, and Andrea Orist provided the leadership for the larger group. And we spent a lot of time talking and agreeing on our efforts. As we talked about racial equity, we determined that there were really three areas we wanted to focus on. Development of a land acknowledgement statement, policy review and development, and education. Those three would be the most important. And frankly, the development of the land acknowledgement statement was our first priority. Part of that was because of the work that was being done in the Passion Pit Old Beach Road area property. And Tracy has been sitting on that committee recently, since Kelly left the group. And so we really appreciate Tracy participating, and that's kind of where she came in. So if you look at the slide that's up on the screen, you can see those three areas I talked about, the racial equity group focusing on. Policy, land acknowledgement, and education. Right now, we're in the process of sharing a draft land acknowledgement statement with many different organizations throughout the community. And after we've done that, organizations potentially like the City of Grand Marais may adopt or revise kind of a draft statement that we have. And then this group is going to continue to work. So you're going to see us for the next few years, because after we've shared our land acknowledgement, we want to go on to inspire and to develop action in the area of policymaking throughout Cook County and also in educating not only organizations but citizens here in the county. So, I don't know how familiar you are with land acknowledgement statements, but it's really an effort to kind of recognize the indigenous past, present, and future of a particular place, a location, and to understand our place within that relationship. And there are a variety of land acknowledgements that have been reviewed. I'm sure you've looked at many different ones as well. They're becoming quite common. They can be verbal, they can be written. You see them delivered at meetings, conferences, community gatherings, you see them on websites. Every organization has to determine how a land acknowledgement fits for their organization and how they're going to use it. And it's important to understand that history has brought us to reside on this land and to seek understanding of our place within the history. We wanted to make sure the words that we wrote were more than words, that they caused us to take action, to support indigenous people. And one of the more valuable resources we actually used was nativegov.org. And Andrea created a lot of links and a series of resources, which I'm sure she'd be more than welcome to share with you. But even that resource site had videos provided called Land Acknowledgement Beyond. And it just, we really dove into educating ourselves before we decided to move forward in creating any kind of a statement. So I said our own learning was first and foremost. It was crucial to, prior to the development of a statement. So we looked at the NativeGovernance.org website. Native Governance is an organization located in the Twin Cities. We also spent lots of time both online and in person with Tad Johnson and a panel of presenters up in Grand Portage. We did a lot of reading, exploration, visiting with a variety of people. We reviewed other land acknowledgements here in Minnesota, nationwide, and even in Canada. We looked at some of the land acknowledgements for different provinces. And then we did a lot of discussion and feedback with organizations here in our community. Native Governance, as I mentioned, was the first resource that we had. And we want to make sure that you take an opportunity to go online, check them out. Again, the recordings of speakers and events, as well as their own land acknowledgement statement, really provided us with a rich education. And those external resources like tribal historic preservation offices, UMD land acknowledgement, things like that were all available through Native Governance. But truly, and I think Andrea, you might want to chime in, one of our biggest pieces of education came from Tad Johnson. And Grand Portage hosted a meeting with Tad and several other presenters. That night, Tribal Chair Bobby Desha was there and John Moran, members of the Tribal Council, Rebecca Crook Stratton and Levi Brown from Mindot. And Tad just led us through an incredible opportunity to learn and to ask questions. And just so you have a little information about Tad, and you may have heard him on WTIP or seen him here in the community, but he's the Senior Director of American Indian Tribal Nations Relations at the University of Minnesota, Director of Tribal Sovereignty Institute, and the Director of Graduate Studies. And in addition to that, he serves on a lot of boards like the Udall Foundation, Native Governance. He's enrolled here in the Boys Fort Band in the Arrowhead. And he's done work on a national level. He's worked with legislators in Washington DC. He's done a lot of work with tribes, with bands in the area of law. He is an attorney who has served for 20 years. So he has great credentials, great background. He was a court judge, an administrator, staff director, and counsel of the Subcommittee on Native American Affairs for the US House of Representatives. I mean, we could go on and on and on. But he is so knowledgeable and he's just so open and welcoming and allows you to ask any question. And I would just encourage you to, if you have a chance, listen to some of the recordings. If you go to Higher Ed, they have some recordings, WTIP does, but he's really a fountain of knowledge and will help your organization to better understand land acknowledgement.
You can also watch the recording of the presentation that they did.
Right.
Out in Grand Portage, which is how I watched it.
Yeah, it's, it's just really great. And so through all of his work, listening to other presenters, all of our study, we came up with three primary suggestions. And so the next slide shares those. The first thing we wanted to make sure we didn't do was sugarcoat the past. As you're writing a land acknowledgement statement, you're going to have language that may make people feel uncomfortable, and that's all right. We talked about using terms like genocide, ethnic cleansing, stolen land. People were uncomfortable with that. I mean, the amount of time we spent contemplating what specific words to use was just amazing. But it was important that we selected the right words and that we not gloss over things and sugarcoat the past. We also wanted to make sure we weren't treating indigenous people as a relic of the past. As we looked at some land acknowledgement statements, it was like, oh, that's in the old days. And we wanted to talk about the present and also that the people that are here are thriving and have a very positive future. We didn't want things to be grim. Again, we want people to be left stronger and empowered because of a land acknowledgement statement. And Tad's online and in-person work with us really helped us to focus on making sure our land acknowledgement had these three elements. Then we spent some time as a group, and Andrea was great in collecting examples of land acknowledgement statements. Again, we looked at Native Governance, U of M, Cook County Higher Ed has a fabulous statement that's on their website. I would encourage you to look at that. And again, we looked to our neighbor to the north, Canada, and lots of other organizations, and then thought, okay, now we're ready to work on our statement. But everybody is like, what if we make a mistake, you know? And it's like, you know, we got to start somewhere. And that this type of a statement is a living document, it can change. So as we got ready to do our writing, we thought about two critical questions. Which indigenous groups are tied here to us in Cook County? What's the history of the area, including the 1854 Treaty? And how and where should we use a land acknowledgement statement? And so there were lots of discussions, lots of meetings over that. And we actually, when we talked about which indigenous groups are tied to Cook County, we also wanted to make sure we were using language that the band in Grand Portage was comfortable with. So we, we ran that by them. We know that we are the ones that own the work and need to do the work for the land acknowledgement statement, but we wanted to recognize that they should approve the language that we use, particularly when we talk about them. Do we use an Ishanabi? Do we use a Jibway? Do we use Grand Portage Band of Chippewa? Those were questions, and we talked to a lot of band members, we talked to members of the Tribal Council, but we got a lot of feedback on that before we finalized our statement. And I'm, I'm really glad we took time to do that. So then, as you move on to the next slide, you'll see that we struggled enough that we couldn't do this in a large group. We had to come up with a work group, a small group. And so Andrea helped with that. We had had individuals in the larger group submit their own land acknowledgements that they worked on, but there was not one statement that was submitted that really had all the elements we were looking for. And so we came up with a work group to examine those statements, to get input from people. And so the small group included Chris Lindholm from ISD 166, Nina McClure, Kelsey Kennedy and I. And we finally got through and developed a rough draft through a series of in-person meetings, couple of times online, and then we sought input from key stakeholders. We sent it back to, for example, North Shore Health. We sent it back to the city. We sent it to all kinds of organizations to try to say, what do you think of this? How does it fit with your organization? How do you think it fits with Cook County? And after we got that feedback, then we came up with our final statement. And there it is. "We acknowledge that Cook County, Minnesota is located on the traditional lands of indigenous people, including the Dakota Cree and Ojibway people, most recently the Grand Portage Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, who have cared for and called this place home for time immemorial. This land holds great significance, and it was taken through exploitation. Indigenous people have not only survived here but maintained a rich culture which continues to thrive. We embrace our opportunity to build relationships based on trust, consistency, and accountability, and offer allyship in a lifelong process of learning. We support and advocate for the sovereignty of indigenous nations that are forever connected to this land." So if you look at that first paragraph, you can see the names of indigenous people from past to present. You can see that uncomfortable word in there, exploitation, that some people really struggled with, and we, we got lots of feedback on and had lots of discussion. But over time, and there was wordsmithing, lots of feedback, this is what we came up with. And the idea is that this statement is a template for organizations here in Cook County. We want to have some similarity between our organizations, kind of a foundation. But then we would like people to take a land acknowledgement and make it fit their organization, make it fit their mission and their purpose. So North Shore Health is going to look very different from the county, different from the school different. There's going to be a little bit different twist. It might be a paragraph before these two, a paragraph at the end, or something changed in between. But again, this provides a foundation for organizations. Cook County and ISD 166 decided to go first, kind of jump in, and try to develop a land acknowledgement statement for themselves. And that's their goal for early 2022. So the idea is to adapt the land acknowledgement that you've been shared with tonight, again, to fit the mission and the purpose of their organization. And then, once these two organizations develop their models, they'll share that throughout the community, and we just hope that this spreads. The idea is, it's not just a written statement, that whatever you come up with drives your decision-making. It causes you pause. It's a different lens to look through before making a major decision. And the land acknowledgement isn't the end of things. I mean, we've started, we've shared it with the Historical Society, the Passion Pit Advisory Committee, Committee of the Whole, tonight, the City of Grand Marais, and later this month, C Club. But after we've shared and developed land acknowledgements, then it's time to move on and work on policies. How does that land acknowledgement impact policies that we make? Do we need to rewrite some of our policies? And then education. How do we educate all of us and our community in this area? And I don't know that these three elements are going to be always separated from one another. Like, right now, at the county, we're already talking about countywide training for employees. And that's in the works not only here in Cook County, but statewide. And we're really, really excited about it. So this is the beginning of a long journey for all of us, but we wanted to, to share with you tonight and give you the opportunity, and Andrea's.
I'm only accidentally here.
She's a great resource. So, anyway, I would just hope that you think about this. It's, it's not that tonight, you know, you're here to ask a bunch of questions and do things. I'd like you to take time to reflect on it. And then attend the next meeting, Thursday, December 16th. If you would like to come to the Joint Powers Community Leadership Group, you can join us online. We love to have people. And it's a pretty large group. I don't know, being this close to the holidays, if this particular meeting will be a big one. But there's just so much great sharing, and we learn so much from each other. And I would just encourage you to regularly participate.
I guess I, the only thing that I would add is, in the beginning, and actually, the work that Jay brought to the group is sort of what got us going on the land acknowledgement itself. Because Jay had already collected some resources and done some, had some meetings with the Tribal Council. So I think that, I mean, having that information to start was really helpful.
And for me specifically, I got really bogged down in the, in the minutia of what you guys, like, what you guys spent a year doing, basically, with, with drafting, drafting the statement that I, that I started, because, you know, the scope of the city is much smaller than the scope of the county. You know, the history of native peoples within the City of Grand Marais is different than it is in the county, you know, specifically Chippewa City out there, Passion Pit out there. Like, this is all within, within the technical boundaries of, of the City of Grand Marais. So, you know, the, the reason that I got started on it was that I went to a rural arts, like, like, not a festival, a rural arts, like, gathering, I guess. I don't know how, what else it was to say it. But they, they did, it was in Dimidji, and they did a, I don't know, it was in Grand Rapids, and they did, they did an acknowledgement before the, you know, before the conference and, and had a person from the local tribe come and bless the entire, you know, bless the conference, you know, with, they had, they had sage, they had the whole deal. And that, you know, like, for me, coming from a place where, where I've never really been a part of that kind of expression, it was incredibly powerful. And it made me realize, like, right in a second, that I was like, whoa, we've got a lot of issues with this stuff right, right in our own backyard, you know? And it's, there's a bunch of different organizations in town, like you said, who are working on this, you know, North House is working on this as well. They just bought a property that, that has significance. I mean, there's, like you're saying, the policy implications of this and the action implications of this are pretty big. So I'm excited to see that you guys got so far with it. Like, that's, it's really cool.
Well, and I'm excited for you to take the next step and dive in and, and, you know, the county is going to be a better place as we work through this, it really is.
The education part, I think, is essential. I mean, that's really the, that's the only way we're going to really change, you know, mindsets about this sort of, this sort of thing. So it's.
I wanted to make that education circle bigger, but, you know.
You didn't want your slides so.
Yeah, yeah.
So off our screen.
Does anyone have any questions for, for Councilor Sullivan or for Andrea? I was going to say, you don't have an official title.
Yeah, I don't, no. You know, it's just Andrea.
Is the question.
That seems like a title. We'll go with that.
Yeah, there you go.
I do think that this is something that, especially because the inertia is built in the county, this is something that the city should take up again. I know that when, you know, I don't know, I started work on this maybe four years ago, maybe three years ago or something like that. And I did actually read a statement that I had written at the beginning of a couple of meetings, but then I just kept getting flustered at the beginning of meetings and I just never remember to read it. And it's a, you know, and I also, that was not something that was approved by the council. So it was also kind of a weird position for me to be stepping into, to be like, hey, I'm going to say this thing that has to do with this council, council's business that they haven't approved. So I would love to see the council do a workshop on this and, and see what we can, what we can hammer out with it, because a lot of the pre-work is done.
So Ann, is the, the statement that was written there, is that close to what you guys came to at the county, or?
We haven't finished our work.
Okay.
We haven't finished our work. We are interested in getting input from department heads, and so we want to come up with, in the beginning of 2022, a way to share that statement with everybody and get feedback. And then we'll probably have another committee put together with maybe a couple of commissioners and a variety of department heads, maybe the county attorney, human resources, but get a number of players at the table so that as we think about this and we think about the implications of the statement on our policies for the future and on how we think and do business, we've got a real good group at the table.
And so then are you, as you go forward, are you looking for like a solid consensus? Or is there just going to be a straight-up vote at some point if it becomes nitty? Just over wording, you know, like some people like this and something like that?
Yeah, you know, that's what we struggled with. And, and finally, that's where people agreed to allow a work group to come together, would that explain their rationale. And then there was feedback, and we tweaked a couple things, but it was, if, we all know, if we get a large group together to come up with a product, you'll work forever on it. And we agreed to say, it's a living document, we can change it, we're going to make mistakes, that's okay. So it's not final.
It was nice, though, to work through the beginning process as a larger group.
Yeah.
Because.
The education.
Right, in order to sort of wordsmith a final version, you had to sort of experience the process and learn about all of the treaties and all of the information that exists out there.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, it's definitely, I think it's the time to be taking it on. So I think we'll definitely be seeing this again in the future. I don't know when. We, we, I've been kind of like couching the work of the city in the fact that we're still looking for another, another employee in the office. And trying to get stuff done takes a little bit more time than, than we necessarily would want it to, but, but that's definitely, it's definitely something that I feel strongly about, so.
I would imagine that you still have access to that Google Drive.
I'm sure I do.
That we started originally, where a lot of the resources live, not this presentation or anything important like that, but the beginning resources.
There's so many resources out there. It's just, it's, it's wonderful. And that's where things have changed significantly, in a good way.
Any other questions, comments?
I did hear this before, that's why. Yeah, that's fine, I'm just like, sorry. And, and I appreciate what you're saying, like, it's just the start, so.
It's important to keep that way, yeah.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you for putting that all in front of us. All right, so that's, I think that's really exciting to see where that's going. And I would like to do a workshop on that when we have, probably in the new year. So here, we have this one back here, it's back. It's Ordinance 2021-02. This is the.
This is the repealing of tobacco regulations. So everyone on the last meeting had an opportunity to, to, to read through the actual ordinance language. And I'll open this up for discussion so that we can have, have our conversation or if someone feels so inclined, a motion to approve the second reading. But I have some more conversation to have before that, so.
I guess there is visual here, so I can nod, but I should also verbally say, yes, I do. I did read through it and I did have a few basic questions and a couple items discussion. And Hartley had reached out to me right away, say, have any questions or whatever, let me know. So I did, I read it a while ago, it was last minute that I got her my questions, but she very quickly got an answer for me today. Some of, one of which she missed, they didn't understand my question right back. But yeah, a few items, some of them were just cleanup. So when you look at the beginning of the ordinance, which to me this is more of a cleanup item, but, you know, it references that they're talking about the county excluding cities or towns. And so, I mean, to me that's just like, was the question, you know, does this need to be sort of cleaned up a little bit if the city comes underneath that? Well, and I suppose Luton, that's a township, right?
Yeah.
I don't know how that falls into all of that, but, so that was a huge deal.
You're talking at the beginning of the county ordinance.
Yeah. Like, I assume you're going to change the language if the city decides to go along, you know, and do this too. And then if I get down to, which I know page number may not mean much, if you don't have it in front of you, but on to page six, same thing, this is probably more of a typo thing, but there is a reference there that has to do with denials of license, but there's two sentences that look very similar. And I asked if, if I was missing the difference or whatever, and he said, I think it's a typo. They're in there twice. So I look at that. Let me get to, I'll skip ahead. The other one that I wondered about, and I don't know how much of his discussion maybe it is, but if you get down to page eight, there's a reference to cigar prices and I get that whole, you know, I, you know, obviously sold this product enough to kind of get what people are up to, but, so I get that part of it. But what surprised me was why the county put a fixed price on that. Because the state and the vendor will commonly put through price changes. And I don't know why you'd want to put a fix, I'd say put a percentage on it, not a fixed price. You could end up being lowball before you knew it. So I, I'd like to know why the county decided to do that. To get, I know what their intent was, but I'm not sure a fixed price did that, unless I'm missing something in the reading there that, that changes that. Then if I go back to page seven, and these are the last two that I'd like some help thinking through. And let me go find it too, so I don't mistake it. There's a sub, I guess it's, because there's subdivision 10, proximity to youth orientated facilities. And I know when the county put this in, we didn't have a youth center in a primary retail commercial district or a community, but we do now. And, and they answered that, recognizing what I was anticipating, but not completely. I don't care about existing businesses, but the way this is written, future businesses would be xed out on this. And I don't agree with that because we've let a youth organization, and it's not that this is uncommon, to try to keep certain businesses away from youth-related facilities. We know that happens with other industry or however you want to say it, other business types. But we said that's okay for them to come in without any thought, and I don't have a big, you know, that's not my point. But I don't want to flip side that on retailers. If somebody wants to end up next door to them and sell cigarettes in what I consider a retail and commercial area, I don't want that to not be allowed, I guess. Knowing we're not putting any restrictions on where they can be located. I'm not so sure. I think that's a good idea. And then the other part, when you get down to page nine, has to do with coupons. And first of all, I just want to make sure I understood it right. Are we telling retailers they can no longer accept coupons and price promotions? And the answer came back, yeah, that's right. And I don't agree with that either. If you're a retailer and that's something, that's an option that somebody can do, then that to me is the retailer's decision if they do or do not want to accept coupons or promotions. You know, provided they're selling it legally and bigger than this county or this city, coupons and price promotions are legal, I don't think, you know, and I'll, and I'll back up on all of this. I'm not a big advocate of any of these products and I'm certainly very concerned about the effect they have on our health and our health costs and everything else. And, and selling them in the past, I would say they're not a big sale in this county at all. Probably never will be. And there's been a lot of things that bring them down. And they're not a big money maker either. But that said, they're a legal thing now and I don't think we should make these kinds of effects on retailers. Should be theirs. I'm certainly concerned about the physical space of future businesses. How likely that is, I don't know.
Right.
But we didn't see these other things coming either.
Hey. You mean, youth center downstairs?
Right. And I'm, I'm not there to give them a hard time in this conversation either.
No.
But I just, the point is we, we just didn't anticipate and I don't know where, we're going to have a lot of new buildings and a lot of new retail, in theory, downtown in the near future. And I'm, and I'm really bad with space, so you tell me how far that goes. You know, if you, you draw a circle around the distance, I don't know how far that is.
It's a thousand feet.
Thousand, the blocks are about 400 feet top to bottom.
I'm not sure if this holiday station up here, it's probably within a thousand feet of the teen center.
Okay.
It's close.
Bucks is definitely.
Yeah. And, and he answered it to that, but he missed my point. You know, I didn't really state it very clearly.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about an existing business, he said, doesn't count, but we just don't know.
Well, not existing, but if they sell and a new owner has to reapply for a new license, the way I read this, it's a new license.
That's true.
So they would be non-conforming.
Right.
Yeah.
Same with Bucks. If Steve sold his place yesterday or tomorrow and the new person wanted to apply for a-
This is great that we have you guys here because you guys have worked on this.
I'm writing notes.
So do you guys have any insights or anything to this?
Yeah, so actually I answered all of the questions that you asked.
Oh, it was you that he sent it to.
And Hartley is a she.
No, I know Hartley's a she. I know her personally.
Oh, okay. You said he a few times.
No, I wasn't, I was referencing who I thought she sent it off to and it wasn't your name.
Oh, Taylor.
That she answered.
Are you talking about Taylor?
I don't remember what's in the email.
Taylor's from the ALA. But also those answers came from me. So as far as the relicensing within a thousand feet, the license goes with the business, not the owner. So if Bucks sold again to somebody else, they already hold a tobacco license within that timeframe. It would only apply to new businesses within a thousand feet.
So new licenses.
Right.
Gotcha. So not renewed.
Well, yeah, I still-
It's not explained that way, so.
Yeah.
It's not how I read it.
The, the, one of the things I think it is important to point out, and I wonder what the process of, you know, having the, you know, the city's going to be rolled into, or would be rolled into, the county, the county ordinance, would there be a possibility for, you know, like you were saying, some, some wordsmithing in here to figure out?
Yeah.
Because it's clear to me, I'm looking through the ordinance, that there are a couple of things that are, that are better, they're better suited for the county platform rather than the city platform, especially a small city like us where, you know, like you're saying, the entire downtown is within a thousand feet of everything. And wondering if there's, if there's some, some workshopping that could be done to make this apply differently within the city or whether that's, basically at that point, we should just keep our own ordinance.
So I guess when, so the things like the cigar costs and the coupons and the 1,000 feet, all of those are additional, additional sections of the ordinance that the county put in purposefully. It wasn't, it was purposely put in to create a greater barrier for youth tobacco use, right? So you're removing the sort of cheaper products that, you know, when I was a kid and I bought cigarettes, I bought the cheapest ones.
Nothing's cheap right now.
Well, nothing's cheap.
That's something that nobody's considering in this whole thing.
Right.
Promotions attract people.
And promotions attract people and especially, you know, if you think about within a thousand feet of a youth center, well, I know the youth center is new to downtown and that was not planned maybe, but it's here now and protecting those youth is an important part of this ordinance. So the county put those things in specifically to create a greater barrier. And we, so we did this with, in, I worked on this as the shift staff with Public Health, the county commissioners, ALA, the American Lung Association, and then the Public Health Law Center. So this was a long process and I don't, I can't speak for the commissioners, obviously. If they want to rewrite the policy, that's totally up to them. And there are things in this that need to be updated that we've already talked about. So maybe that's part of the conversation, but those, those specific additions that are, that have been referenced, you know, those were purposefully put in as added layers of protection. So it would be up to the current commissioners and whatever work group they created if they wanted to remove it.
Okay. So are you saying that, at least insofar as this ordinance goes, that you would rather keep it in-house? Is that what you're saying? Or you're saying like, let's let the county do it, but let's have them maybe, or attempt, you know, talk to them?
I have a question. I'm looking at this signed on the 26th of November, 2019. Is this currently the county ordinance?
Yeah.
Are you currently following this ordinance?
I hope so.
Who enforces non-compliance?
Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Sheriff's Department does all the compliance checks and enforces the non-compliance.
Okay.
And so, I mean, the optimal-
I have a problem with this.
The, I mean, the optimal situation is that the sheriff's department would enforce one policy countywide since they do the enforcement for the whole county.
And to clarify, so they're, they're doing the checks?
Yeah.
Are we, do we get?
They're the only agency.
Yeah, yeah. No, I recognize that. I'm just wondering if-
I've never seen any checks.
Any report of any kind, okay.
I can ask, Pat.
Yeah.
They certainly have in the past.
Okay. Well, they do checks in town, but I, the reason why, the reason why I brought this up is I, I've read this, I appreciate what Tracy did. I spent a lot of time on the phone today, yesterday actually, today, with a county licensee, brought a lot of this to their attention that seemed to be new to them. So if this has been enforced since 2019, then I start reading the couponing, the cigar pricing. My question is, you have this ordinance, but it's, it's not being used. It's not being enforced. Reason why I made the phone call is I wondered, I wanted to know how this impacted his business. And I started asking questions about their business and they do the same thing I do right now. Do the same thing they do across the street. So a lot of things went through my mind about the community we have, about how much money we spend advertising and recruiting people to come up here, you know, and people come up here thinking, I don't, you know, I just, there's a lot of things that, when we start making rules and laws about couponing, we can't take a coupon from somebody that legally has a coupon that's 40 years old. Sorry, our county doesn't take that coupon. So now we just made another disgruntled customer. We already have enough of those in this community all summer long because they can't find a place to eat, they don't like what hotels are charging for their nights and, you know, I'm just looking at the negative impact. I understand the health part of this, but I also understand we have laws, age laws of people who can buy this stuff mandated by the state and the federal government. I think it's a reach when we start telling our local businesses, this is what you have to sell a cigar for, $4. This is the most you can sell a three, four, or five pack of cigars. The least you can charge is $1,250. I have a problem with those types of rules. I mean, I know why you're doing it is to keep it from, an attempt from a younger person to purchase, but a younger person's not supposed to purchase. You know? My policy at my store is we ID everybody. Cigarettes, alcohol, because you have to. And I wish the state would come out with a mandated ID so the consumer knew that. That's what we need to work on, is the consumer knows, so we're not offending somebody when we ask for their ID. The consumer should know that. That would stop a lot of this stuff that's going on here. I mean, you know, if young kids want to drink, they're going to figure out how to get a drink. They want to smoke, they're going to figure out how to buy a cigarette, whether it's 10 bucks or 500 bucks. We're trying these things that don't work. That's my opinion. I mean, I understand your efforts and I understand with this, how this fits, but I also understand this thing is three years old and it's not being used. So I'm wondering why we as a city want to let the county regulate our licensing that we should probably regulate. We regulate our alcohol, we regulate a lot of other things within the city. I think we should continue regulating our tobacco the way we feel fit for our businesses and our community. That's how I feel about it.
And I thought the idea was, is that it was kind of lightening the load a little bit was part of the reason to say, well, let's have the county do it.
Well, it is lightening the load because we don't have this.
Well, we, well, the more-
We have a process to get a license. It's cheaper than this, but, I mean, we can charge whatever we want as a city for a cigarette license or an alcohol license.
The licensing process is not burdensome for us.
No.
Okay.
The idea of writing an ordinance specific to our needs-
Is.
-and the council said, we're okay with using the county's ordinance, seems like a waste of effort, but now it seems pretty clear that's not what the county-
Well, the other question I have, and I read it today on the, okay, just backtrack. I'm on the city council, so I'm privy to this information. However, I went on the county website to actually get this. The city never sent me this.
Oh, we did get an email.
Yeah.
I never got it.
I think I sent it to you three times, Craig.
The actual ordinance?
Yeah.
I do not, I, my wife made a copy of this off the county website. So the reason why I ask this question is, did the other businesses in this community, have they been, how have they been contacted?
Oh, those that would have possibly affect-
Adopting this.
It's a little-
We've met with them all personally.
You met with all of them personally?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering.
What, the way I do this, this ordinance and the adoption of the, of the city, or the city adopting the county ordinance for this, isn't, it isn't about streamlining things. Hey, you know, it's, it's about, it's about making a statement in our community about what, what the expectation's going to be. And if we have problems with the, with the sheriff enforcing what, what was passed for the county in 2019, now there's no excuse for him to further be a problem with that. Because if, if we pass this and the city has the same ordinance as the rest of the county, then everyone knows what- then everyone knows what's expected. I, I can, I can resonate a little bit with the, with the business concerns that Tracy brings up, that you bring up, Craig, about, about, you know, like, what's our job? Like, how are we supposed to interact with businesses as far as telling them what they can and can't do? Like, I also, I, so I, I understand that. I also, I also, you know, believe that the Tobacco 21 concept is the direction that everybody's moving in. It's the direction that the federal government's moving in. It's the direction that the state's moving in. I think that it's, I think it's going to happen sooner or later. So if, if we don't feel comfortable with taking on the county regulation, then I suggest that we, that we, that we put, we create our own Tobacco 21 ordinance and have that, have the rules be appropriate to what the city is. You know, what, what, what unique situations present themselves in the city. But that's, I mean, I, I think that that's going to complicate things more as far as what the regulation is. Maybe, maybe not. I mean, maybe it's just as simple as now you need to have a driver's license that says you're 21 instead of, instead of 18 to buy, to buy tobacco.
Well, we don't need a local ordinance to say that. That's already a law. We don't have to make a law that is redundant with another. The only reason we would pass an ordinance is if we wanted to further regulate it.
So my hope out of this was to at least approach the county to talk through those more discussion items. To me, the rest are just wording things. To see, or if they say no, we're totally happy the way we have it and, you know, whatever. But I'd like that opportunity, then I guess I'd be willing to make, you know, after that, then decide what we, what we should do as a city.
Do you have any? You were raising your hand.
Oh, I was just gonna pretty much say what Mike just said, vote in the state law. Um, yeah.
Well...
Can I ask a question though?
Well, tech, yeah.
Sure.
Technically no. Technically no. Well, technically, technically no.
That's okay.
I mean, shut up.
She's technically on.
Not an open...
You're on and not on.
So she's, I think that's why you came, was for this.
That's why, this is why I came, yeah.
Oh, I thought you came from the other side.
No, this was a happy accident.
No, she's...
Oh, okay.
No, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You can say which I don't.
So as far as enforcement goes, does the sheriff currently enforce the state-level T-21 for the city?
I mean, the only people, I mean, Craig, you're the only one who...
That's who does compliance checks, it would be the sheriff. If they're doing compliance checks on underage selling, yes. That's the sheriff's department.
Okay. And like, do you, do you know, are they doing that as they're supposed to per the state regulation that the city is, falls under right now?
I have no idea because they, they can compliance check you, but they don't come back and give you a blue ribbon if you pass.
Oh, right.
They come back, they come back until you screwed up. So they might have been in my store 15 times and I passed, I don't know that. If you mess up, then you know that.
Yeah, there is a report actually that you can read on each store that has a compliance check done.
Okay, so I don't know what their schedule is.
Okay, just wondering. Because just...
I haven't...
Just to have a context from the, the point that you made about the, the county ordinance not being followed specifically, I just wanted some context because I don't, I don't know.
Well, go for a ride and go make a purchase somewhere that doesn't comply with this out of the city. And you have no problem doing it, so...
Well, I technically make those purchases all over the county and the city because they have been using tobacco since I was 14.
No, but I'm just saying. I'm just saying if I have to, yeah, well...
Yeah, I, no, I wasn't trying to create any conflict. I just am curious about how it works in the city.
No, I don't want to create a conflict either. I just, I just, um, you know, we're regulated by the state and feds on just about everything we do. If it's pumping gas and fixing things and alcohol...
Yeah.
Tobacco, I mean, I just changed my tobacco pricing and, I mean, there's been some major increases. And they have limits on how they can do certain things. You know, and yeah, and they, they do sell discounted products once in a while, just like a lot of other consumer items, you know, but, um... To restrict, I mean, I just see, I just, I don't know. I just, I have a problem with, you know, all coupons would be restricted so clerks would simply not take them. So somebody comes in, sorry, can't take that. Or a cigarette wholesaler says, we have Camel Blues at 50 cents off a pack. They come in a generic carton, do you want? We're going to send you four solid five cartons or something. And they're 50 cents off. And it's something by the manufacturer, has nothing to do with the state or federal, but that would be an item that I could no longer sell.
Right.
So, I mean, that's just...
It, it's not a lot of money. They aren't a high-profit item. They've got expiration dates and so you count, you gotta flip them and watch them and send them back. You get those promotion items, a lot of times they aren't big sellers. In fact, I quit taking them because I just sat there in the rack.
A lot of like cartons and, you know, big retailers like Speedway started out by selling cartons at state minimum, which is what, 7% or something like that? So a lot of your cartons are sold at the minimal markup the state will allow you to do, you know? But it's still part of sales of a, of an establishment. So, I mean, and yeah, I mean, there's a health angle. And I know everybody, it's, it's, it's easy to, to turn an arm and say it's a health angle, but it's also, also an economic angle. And there's a lot of things we put blinders on if you want to talk about health. We don't talk about what alcoholism costs this county. We haven't, we never, we can't touch that. We don't, never talk about that. But it costs the county a lot of money. There's a lot of things.
Well, so what I'm hearing...
Drinking too much pop, drinking too many energy drinks, drinking, eating too much, whatever. I mean, and I understand the health implications of cigarette smoking. I don't smoke. My kids don't smoke. I've never wanted to smoke, but some people do. And older people do it. And a lot of older people enjoy it. That's their habit. A lot of people have habits, now whether it's a good habit, an unhealthy habit. I don't think I'm the god to tell them what they're doing right or wrong in their lives. But more and more I see stuff like this, it's like, you know, especially when you're reaching out to say, well, Craig, you can sell this, but it's got to be $4. You can sell this, but it's got to be $1,250. So now I gotta sell a pack, I gotta sell a pack of cigars that I normally sell for $8.99, I got on a market to $1,250. I mean...
So what I'm hearing is I'm hearing that, that this, this needs more work. That we're not ready, we're not ready to accept the county, county ordinance right now that we...
I'm not ready for it, but I'm also not ready for certain things like, you know, we have a city, we have, we have a county. How many other policies do we let? We don't regulate what the county does, you know? I mean, I don't know, I mean, I understand why we kind of drifted into this pattern because they have an ordinance, let's just adopt it. But maybe it's not what we want to do. That's kind of how I feel.
And I think that is, that is what it was.
You know?
Well, it's because there was a presentation to the council and the council said that it sounded good. So that's why...
Well, I understand that, but when I saw the presentation, I didn't get a chance to read this. I didn't know what the hell the county's ordinance was.
Which is why we have two readings of every ordinance that we have so that we haven't gotten into this situation right now. So if, if it's, if it is the will of the council, I would say we table this. And I'd say that we, that we do some more thinking about this in the future, whether or not that's, you know, taking a look at our own ordinance or re, you know, revisiting what the county ordinance is and, you know, trying to work with the county to figure out what, how it works together. But, but the conversation we're having here right now, although a good conversation, I don't think is going to get us to a, to a place of resolution. So I would say we table this and move on to the next item we need to handle.
Okay.
I would agree.
Yeah, Andrew?
I have one more comment. I just, I guess, I appreciate the conversation and all of the points that you brought up. The, the sort of drive behind the T-21 movement is youth tobacco prevention. So all of the layers that are in the state ordinance and all of the added layers that the county put in are in the effort for youth tobacco prevention. So those 14-year-olds don't still, don't start smoking and when they're 42, they're still smoking. There's that sort of gap, a stopgap to help protect them from starting to smoke. And that's, that's the drive behind this ordinance. And I, everybody understands that it affects retailers and it affects other grownups that uses coupons and buys cigars and all of that stuff. But it's, it's a hard move to support youth tobacco prevention, which is an important aspect in healthy communities, right? Because if you don't start smoking when you're 14 or 17 or whatever, you have a much healthier community. So that's when the SHIP program and South Street Mountain Clinic and the ALA, when we approached the situation, it's, you know, in an attempt to build a healthier community and prevent youth tobacco use. So, um, we will still be here to help you through the process.
Great. It's great to have that resource.
I think we're all pretty clear about the purpose, which is a good one. I'm just not sure these are the right ways to do that. Because as Craig pointed out, you know, what's a coupon if you're 14? Because you're not supposed to be buying cigarettes anyways.
I don't have, most of my coupon people are, yeah, well, they're not kids.
Right. I mean, you're, you're not buying anyways because there's other things that prevent you from that. And pricing isn't the issue.
Yeah, right. It's, it's a sort of drive to, to help prevent the specific targeting of people of low income and youth and the whole tobacco industry targeting that they do to get people hooked on smoking or to keep them in by, here's a coupon, buy another pack of cigarettes. Here's a coupon, buy another pack of cigarettes. These cigars are super cheap, you should buy them. These cigars taste like bubble gum, you should buy them. So, you know, it's, that's, that's the sort of drive behind that. And, you know, I think that for some people, it might feel like a punishment. You know, I'm 40, whatever, how old I am, 41 or 42? And I don't, I, I smoke, but I don't use tobacco coupons. So like, I wouldn't feel that pain, but if I really needed to or I wanted to, I would be upset that I was denied. But eventually I would get over it because everybody would deny me and that would be my own problem. So I don't know. That's all. Actually, I could talk forever, so you should just move on.
Before you move on though, I want to give a little bit of idea of the direction you want to move on to.
Yeah.
So tabling this now with the idea that we might want the county to entertain some conversation about modifying it, sounds like it's going to take some time.
Yes.
Which means now we better go back to our licensees and tell them they need to apply back to you for a license for next year because their licenses expire at the end of December.
Correct.
Yep.
And is that what you want to do? Is enter into a conversation with the county about the items that you brought up today and see if they're interested in making any changes? Because we can just quickly reach out to them and ask them.
I think that's only fair.
I think it makes sense to ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an ask.
And, and if they don't, are we going to talk about our own ordinance? Or are we going to stop talking about it?
I think we'll go from there after we hear.
Something to think about then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Anton's not here.
It's true, you could always take it up again if you wanted to.
Yeah, it's not like this is a forever decision.
That's also not going to, I don't think this, I don't think this ordinance as is written in the Cook County Tobacco Ordinance is going to ruin anyone financially. I mean, that's my, my take on it. So, okay, so...
I mean, some of the issues that you had with it, I think, Craig in particular, when you talked about these things don't work. Like, that's not the presentation that we received the first time. There's data that shows that these things do work. And I wonder if you want to see some of that data or if that's not really the issue. And if, if your concern is that some of these work or don't work, we can look at data that shows that can, you can decide what you think about it. But I'd hate to just move on in the conversation and say these things don't work and not remember the data that we saw that said that they do.
We could do the presentation again.
I don't, I...
I don't know what you mean. I said they don't work.
Like, you said, you know, if a kid wants to smoke, they're going to find a way to smoke.
They are.
Yeah.
You're telling me they're not? I mean, I've seen, I've seen, I've seen people of age buy a carton of cigarettes, go out in their car, flip it to the backseat to kids that aren't of age. What am I supposed to do about that?
The, the data though shows that when these regulations get put in place, that the rates of smoking go down in youth.
Well, I'm not arguing that. I'm just arguing the point that if somebody wants to smoke or drink and they're not of age, they want to do it. They're going to figure out a way to do it.
Right.
I don't care if the bottom of alcoholism...
But that doesn't obviously what we're supposed to do here is, you know, like, our job is still to go for the good. I mean, you know, it's like, okay, fine, they're going to go do it.
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not against, that's what, okay, well, whatever. We have rules and laws that we're supposed to follow, but apparently they're not good enough, so we make our own. That's what we're doing here.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And that's your job.
That's our job.
I know, but I'm just saying, we have federal and state laws that businesses have to follow.
The point is to create, to create the environment that we want in the, in the city with, with the, with the rules that we, that we pass, that we create, that we have, you know? And, and if this isn't a good fit for it, for us, for this city, for this, for this community, then I say we look, we work on it. If this is a good fit for us, then, then we go for it. But, you know, it's, it seems like, you know, right now there's four of us here and it seems like there are major concerns about it. So I would say that, you know, what we're going to do, what we have to do, we have to tell the people who have licenses with us that they're going to apply for us because we're not going to get through this in time. And then, and then we have to reach out to the county and we also have to take a look at what we want. Like, what does the community actually want? Like, what does the city want to do for this ordinance? Because I would love to see the Tobacco 21 ordinance more strongly enforced in, in the community. It's a, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to, I think it's only going to help. I don't think it's going to hurt. So, so that's, that's where I'm at with it. I feel like if, if that's our marching orders, then, then I say we, we move on it. We, we start moving that direction. Because, because, you know, like, right now, I feel like there's a lot of, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of kind of confusion around, around the county ordinance or, you know, we don't know how to really apply it to the city space. So maybe we do have to just take a step back and try and figure that out and, and in the meantime, take care of the businesses that have tobacco licenses in the city. Because, because we, we should.
Yeah.
Right.
I was going to say, reach out to, to some of the retailers in city limits, but you said you already did, so you must have comments already from them or thoughts?
No, we didn't, we did not receive their thoughts about...
I don't think any one of them have read this.
I misunderstood. I thought you said you already talked to them.
We talked to them about the need, that this change is occurring and that the county ordinance was going to take effect and that they were going to have to apply for a license with the county.
Oh, just that change of procedure. Okay, got it, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to, to hear. I mean, I'm making, that's based on what I used to do and I'd like to hear who does know, you know, how they think about it. My only real, and the pricing thing is more like why, I'm just curious why you put it fixed dollar amount. That's something that I know fluctuates quite a bit.
Yeah. And I can't remember, did it say like in whatever dollars, like, you know, $21, $19 or something like that?
No.
Time to replace it?
No, that's why, it's a fixed, it's a, it's a dollar amount, that's why I asked it.
Yeah, so, because I would agree, like, a percentage, you know, over the long term would probably make more sense.
Yeah. I'm not sure I had any problem with that, I just thought that was an odd way to, to go after it.
I would be interested in moving forward.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay. City Hall, the historic conversation, so there's three items on this. These are all, in my mind, things that Mike, you're going to leave, so...
And that, we don't need to spend a lot of time talking about any of these. The, the information in the budget is provided for you to look at as quite of a reminder and a placeholder. And if it feels comfortable where it's at, then we don't have to talk about it. I guess I'll ask the question. Do you have anything you want to talk about this budget?
Well, I think it's important to go over the numbers for the sources of funds that we've, that we identified, so the budget review, I think that's important. we've, that we identified, so the budget review, I think that's important. That's something that in the past is, has come up as a concern for a number of council people, as far as the alternate site process.
Yeah, we're not, let's do the budget first.
Well, I was just going through the three of them, as far as what we have to do here. But, yeah, okay, go for it.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, no, I didn't look through this.
Okay. Quick history of the budget. We started in 2015 at a budget of two point five million based on nothing. We didn't have a project, we didn't know. But it was just a placeholder to start planning around. When we built the Public Works Garage, we had a better idea of what building projects cost. We upped our budget to four million dollars at that point, but we still didn't have a concept to go around, other than kind of what we have. And then in 2020, we had our first real concept report and we had it priced out by McGough, who was our construction manager on the Public Works Garage. And they said it was about six million dollars. And further work refining the scope with LHB and with McGough reduced this down to about five point two million. The current, where are we going to pay for this from to get to five point two million is in the table attached. We have approximately a million and a half dollars in the liquor fund right now, so we were talking about taking a million of that as cash to spend on the project. We also, we're talking about spending a million and a half of general fund cash on the project for a total of two and a half million. The remaining two point seven million would be new debt. And the approximate cost then of that new debt is something we've also been planning for. So if you, if you think about it as a twenty-three percent, it's a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. I don't know whether we're going to do twenty-year payback and we've been doing better than three percent lately, so this is still just a budget number, right? The budget that we've been using in our latest three-year budget projection showed starting a hundred and seventy thousand dollar debt payment in 2024. So the current planning that we are doing to put our budget together anticipates a project of this size that we start paying debt on in 2024.
So can I just ask a question real quick?
That's what I was going for.
The, so you had a placeholder, like, in the budget, like, was holding it, like, three years back to say, like, okay, if we know that we're potentially going to need this money, so you made a placeholder at that point? And that, those were like actual dollars that are sitting there?
Yes and no. A part of the hundred and seventy thousand dollar debt payment is actual dollars in the 2021 budget.
Okay.
That we are collecting and then not using yet to make debt payments, so we're setting aside as reserves and then we'll use to fund part of that million and a half that we would use as cash.
Oh, okay.
Rather than, don't have it in the budget at all and then instantly it shows up and we absorb it, we want to try and smooth that off.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions about the, the concept of that payment? We've been, we've been talking about this for a while and so it's been in the budget for a while.
The purpose of this budget is not to say we want to spend five point two million dollars on this project, right? It's just to give some comfort that if you decide you want to spend five point two million dollars on this project, we have a plan to do that.
Yeah. There's a lot of room to spend less than five point two million.
Yeah. And, you know, it may end up costing you more depending upon what you decide to do. So this is still just a budget and it's based on a concept that we're not a hundred percent doing right now. So that's kind of the next couple of steps. But this was the first one, is everybody wanted a quick reminder of what did the budget look like?
Yep. So, any other questions for that? If not, then we'll go to the alternate site review process conversation. So this basically is just like a placeholder so that we can discuss the process of, of where else could we have a liquor store in City Hall and/or City Hall. So I don't know, Tracy, if you have any thoughts about a process that we can do for that or how we could, or Mike, if you have a concept of a process for that? I mean.
I think that this is on the agenda, because Tracy asked for it and she definitely has some ideas.
So, as a memory, when that property discussion came at the top of the hill, it just sort of came out and I was, I was like, okay, so who started this conversation and how did this happen? It wasn't a, a meeting discussion here in a city council meeting when the property that, of Tom Toboda became available. It's like, hey, we've already got this, you know, this potential negotiated. And in my head, I'm like, okay, when did this happen and who did this? So to me, somewhere we had the ability to have a conversation about items that are kind of delicate, without it being a full city council topic. And what is our ability this time to run in and have conversations at even a very basic level again? And who are our best sources to do that? And that was my question, really, about how do we do that?
Have you heard that?
Right. We obviously were able to do that one other time. And I was hoping that our attorney would give us some suggestions, but technical difficulties, right? He's a phone caller. Or we ask him another time, or if someone else has an idea.
I don't think there's any legal, legal concerns for us gathering information from people.
Okay.
As far as who does the gathering of the information? I mean, I think that's whoever is the, you know, agent of the city.
Okay, that's really my question. Then who is the best person? I guess that's what I thought, maybe the attorney would say, who is a good person to be that agent? Is it a broker? Is it a realtor? Is it just someone we decide is a good person?
Well, what level are we at right now? Because.
We're at the very basic level.
Yeah. My understanding is that we're not talking about a purchase, we're talking about gathering information.
No, we're not. But even then, how you approach people, even from the beginning of any kinds of conversations, to me.
Well, we've also had this conversation at multiple public meetings. So people know that we're having this conversation. I don't think that people are going to be surprised when, when somebody comes up to their business and says, hey.
It's not the point of surprise.
Well, that's what you said. So, so I'm confused as to, as to what you're getting at here.
I'd like to know who would be the best person to do this and who can be that agent.
Yep. Okay. I believe we have agents of the city that work for us, that can, that can do this work.
Okay.
I mean, that's my take on it. I don't, I guess I'm not understanding if you think that, that the employees of the city aren't suitable to do that.
Oh, yeah, I'd prefer that it was not. We tried to send my email, so.
Well, you said it to me.
Oh, I thought I emailed that to both of you.
Yeah, but that, I mean, the whole council.
Oh, true. That's why I was wondering if we, the city attorney had a suggestion about what they normally do.
And I'm not, why, why would we do that? Why would we not use?
Because I think that maybe we could find someone with a little bit more of a background in that kind of work and an impartial, completely impartial.
Impartial in what regards?
In any regards.
I'm not, I'm having a hard time understanding, like, the rationale for excluding city, our city employees from, from doing the work. Because, because like, the, an agent of the city talking to someone about, you know, potentially gathering information about, about the availability of a property, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I guess I don't, I don't see how that could, how that would be necessary to be a broker or to be someone who is, who has, you know, less knowledge of the city organization than people who work for us.
Well, I'm confident Chris would tell you that I can do this. And if he wanted to say it to you, I'm sure he can. If you'd rather have somebody else do it, that's fine with me. Like, call a realtor if you'd rather do that.
Any thoughts, Craig?
No. I mean, I guess if you're looking at all the options, then.
We can certainly ask what the pros and cons of different approaches are.
If we know what the options are, we can, then we can sort out the pros and cons of what we can and cannot do. Right now, there seems to be a question that there may be other options. So let's just find out if there are. If there isn't, then we are dealing with what we're dealing with.
I agree.
I think Tracy's question is how you're going to generate those options and who's going to do that work? And if it involves contacting existing property owners, who's the right person to do that? And I think you should pick someone you're comfortable with.
And at this point, I think that, like, if this is information that we need to gather, we need to find a way to do that, to gather that information. You know, I honestly, I don't know if I care how we get the information. I feel like, you know, whomever goes and discusses this with potential other locations is going to get a pretty similar answer, no matter who goes there. But I also am not completely privy to environmental realities of some of that stuff. So I don't, I mean, I don't know. I feel like the best way to gather the information is to ask. And it's, do we put out an RFP for realtors who want to do this work for us? I mean, that, that seems like that's, if we, if we don't use the in-house people that we have, it seems like that's, that's the way to move forward, right? I mean, as far as like, within the city organization.
Here's a thought. Can we talk it over with the EDA, come to think of it? That's part of our organization, right? It's the Grand Murray Kukoni EDA.
As far as having them be an agent to gather information for us?
Maybe. Or I have a process idea. I don't know. This is a thought.
I mean, I don't care, like, that's fine. We can certainly talk with them, see what they're.
Yes. Suggestion, they assume have to do something similar to this more frequently than we do.
They talk about deals that are happening? Yeah.
Just a thought out loud. I don't know.
Well, let's talk with, let's talk with, with Chris, and then let's, and we can talk with the EDA, with the EDA Director Drust as well, and see if they have any, any kind of suggestion for, you know, the most appropriate way to gather that information as far as process is concerned. And then, and then maybe, I mean, and I, we just, we have to gather the information either way we look at it. So, so gather some information or, I mean, talk with some people, get some, get some suggestions and then we can, I don't know if we want to talk about it again, I feel like we probably have to. And then, and then we get the information, so.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Okay. So moving on to the last thing here, the remaining Public Works property. So these are the, what is it, like, one and a half acres, two acres that's up there?
Yeah, about, about an acre on one side of the road and an acre and a half on the other.
Okay. So that, what chunk of that property did Kennedy put his interest in?
The east.
East side?
The west, the west.
The west side?
The west side of the road going into the Public Works building, I believe, right?
Yeah. So the part that's closest to W T I B?
No.
No, sorry, my western eastern.
Yeah.
So I've only, I've only read that like twenty-five thousand times.
Site that's kind of already.
It's all grassy and, you know.
It's a good lot. There was a building standing there on logs for quite a while, being stored there, yeah.
So that's still pending, you know, pending sale on that?
Well, that's really the one we're talking about.
As far as what?
Needing to get it moved along or resolved. There's some time sensitive, time sensitivity to this, we need to deal with this.
Chris looking into that already? I think he does, or?
We've got.
The proper way to.
We had our engineers looking into it.
Okay.
So.
As far as selling the property?
Well, there's no, there is no property yet, right? So there needed to be a legal description created.
Right.
There also needed to be some thought put into how it would be served by the existing utilities in the space. And then we need to get an appraisal done. So that's the step we're on right now. There's an appraiser that's signed up, ready to go. And if you want, it, it just seemed like the timing of Tim asking about what's going on and the council talking about perhaps revisiting their decision to have City Hall and Liquor Store downtown came at the same time. So if you are thinking that property is still a potential for us to be putting City Hall and Liquor Store on, then probably a good thing for us to let Tim know that we're not going to be able to sell it to him by his timeframe. And if we're going to continue to think about selling it to Tim, then, you know, it's potentially not going to be available for us to put City Hall Liquor Store on.
Well, which side was, isn't that the smaller of the pieces of land?
That's, I mean, we're on a piece right now that's an acre. So that's kind of what, what we looked at before about putting City Hall up there for sure was on that side. And if it was, if it was going to be both, it was a question of whether it would be one or the other, but.
So there's not enough, I mean, I don't even, didn't know we were, okay, so that bigger spot, where the swimming pool used to be.
Yeah.
That would not hold both, potentially both.
Oh, no. I think even the smaller one could potentially hold both.
So it would be okay to at least decide, you know, that's not a, a part of the decision we need to make to know if Tim can complete his sale. There's other work that needs to be done, but that's not one of the factors, though.
I think it can be one of the factors. I mean, you're, you're taking one of your options off the table while you're developing a list of options. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And if it is, we'll just keep moving.
Right.
No, that's my question. So he only wants the west side.
Right.
Yeah.
So the east side, which is bigger.
Yeah.
Could that hold both? I mean, I don't even know that we were doing this, but if, if we needed to, could both of those things go on that west side so that he could still, I mean, I'm sorry, on the east side so he could still pursue his smaller lot purchase without that having to be one of our considerations?
I mean, I, I think so. We never drew it up and I'm, I'm pretty sure we could put them both on either side.
We're looking at the size of the building that we proposed for the City Hall Liquor Store, you know, and then the size of that lot, there's a lot of extra square footage here.
The east side's bigger, acre and a, acre and a half?
Yeah.
So the east side would leave you enough room and he could have his smaller piece.
Yeah. I guess it is just one less option.
Now, the driveway going into the Public Works Garage, is that what you're working on? Easements or legal descriptions, is that going to include that driveway?
We're gonna, I think the plan right now is that we'll just retain ownership of the driveway and grant access easements to anybody that we would sell property to.
To the east and west?
Yeah. Rather than like dedicate it to the public as a street. I think it's better if we just retain ownership of it.
Okay. So they could use it for access?
Yeah. Because I, I think that for sure, the property on the west is not going to have its own driveway on Highway sixty-one. And so it'll have to use that as its access.
Okay.
And then the property on the east does have.
Could probably have.
Room for driveway.
Have its own, yes.
Yeah. The more complicated part, and this is part that doesn't have to be solved quite as quickly is the question of how the utilities will serve the property. That's something that we're also working on with LHB, is that right now, there is a water line in the driveway, but there's not a, a gravity fed sewer line. The, uh, Public Works Garage is using a lift station that was there to serve the motel. And, and anybody else that's gonna build there is gonna have to figure out how to get to that lift station.
Under our garage, or underneath, underneath our driveway.
Yeah. Which is something that if, you know, we wanna sell those properties, it's in our interest to have a good answer for them.
Right. And where's, is the lift station out by the highway or is that?
No, it's inside of a fence, really. It's, it's our, on our piece of property.
Okay. Back by the garage?
Oh, within that fence then or like even beyond that?
It's, I think it's inside of it.
Yeah, it's inside the fence. It's, so on the front side of the garage where the, where the, where the, the blacktop kind of turns to the left. So you drive in the gate and it turns to the left around that side of the building.
Oh, okay.
It's right there. Big man, tub.
And that can handle development up there?
It can handle what Tim's talking about, sure.
Okay, well, yeah, but, yeah.
If somebody wants to build 40 apartments on a big piece, then, uh, probably not.
No. Okay.
You know, that's a good problem to have.
So we wanna have a conversation about, about moving forward with the sale of that, of the western side, the western part? Are we gonna wait?
I don't think there's anything you need to talk about. I mean, it's in process. So the appraisal will be done in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
So have you reached back out then to Tim recently to let him know where this is at? Do we need to communicate to make sure this is still meeting his timeframes and let him know?
Yeah, but I thought maybe we better have this conversation first.
Okay, and then you'll, okay. All right, so he'll get an update and make sure that will work.
Yep, cool.
And either way, it sounds like some of this you need regardless in case something else. I mean, you need the legal description, you need.
I'm assuming that eventually we're gonna wanna sell these or use these.
Yeah.
I think that's the plan, always, always has been.
Yep.
Yeah, so I mean, it's work that needs to be done irregardless.
We'll, we'll find use for it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So you're getting the west lot appraised, but we're not doing any appraisal on the east side right now?
That's right.
Okay.
So we're just kind of putting a rush on the stuff that we need to get done for a potential sale.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're still working on the rest, but just not as quickly.
Does that make sense for everybody?
Yep. Yep.
Cool. All right, move right on. City Administrator, Administrator Job Description Review. So, um, I have on my phone the quote from Flaherty Hood. This is Brandon Fitzsimmons, uh, which is one of the shareholder attorneys at the, at Flaherty Hood. Gave us a quote on March 5th of 2021 to provide the services that would, that would allow us to have a thorough reassessment of, of performance evaluation and job analysis for the city administrator. So the, um, I'll just read through some of the things that they put in this. Uh, so the, the services that they provide, the review of the city's job classification compensation system, which includes a job analysis process and the job description itself and the job evaluation, i.e. the ratings and points that the ROI had, puts on it. That's not that big of a deal, um, because I do believe that position is maxed out anyway. Um, next, job analysis. So that would be drafting and distributing a job description for review, comment and comment. Uh, so that would, they would be gathering information from department heads, et cetera, et cetera. Um, city council or designees review and, review the comments on the job description and the completed questionnaires. Uh, discuss and review and analyze the review, uh, and comment of job description and the completed. So basically, that's all like doing the data processing for the questionnaires and for the data that would, that would be gathered. So reviewing and drafting an updated format for the job description, uh, doing a, uh, skill, effort, responsibility, working conditions and other relevant work-related criteria for the position. So doing, doing evaluating that. Uh, performance evaluations, uh, creating a performance evaluations, that would be done. And, uh, then doing a final report. So this, uh, this whole process, Tracy and I got together and talked about this. The, the bill that they, that they're putting on this is a substantially discounted price of $2,500. And so that was, that was what they came up with. Um, and Tracy, if I'm, if I don't catch everything about what we had in our conversation, um, we believe that it would be in the city's best interest to, um, you know, to spend the money and to get the, and to, to get a, not a partial third party to do a good chunk of the work and to gather the information, because it would, um, it would take it off of the plate of anyone in our office. And the only person really in our office who has the ability to do that is Mike. We're not gonna have him do the assessment on himself. Um, so, did I miss anything?
Phil, I know there was some, one more thing they offered, we thought was money worth spent. Now I'm like, blanking out what it was.
Part of, part of the, of the proposal.
Okay.
So the interview, the remote interviews and the questionnaires cost $400. Um, the, uh, the pay evaluation was $1,500. The, uh, market analysis was, uh, was $1,250. And then compile, review and analyze market compensation data, other than wages, wage structure and health, insurance contributions, which is $500 per category. Um, so.
So they discounted that?
Yeah, so they're saying that they would be willing to do that for those additional, like, pay criteria, things that impact the, the pay that that position gets. So it's, um, is that what you meant? I'm trying to remember what it was.
It was one of the things and I thought, oh yeah, that's money well spent. And I'm just like blanking out what that was, sorry.
I think it, I made, I think it might have been the questionnaires we were talking about. Having, having them do the questionnaires and contact the department heads and other employees.
Doing.
Because then, because then they're the ones doing that information, not somebody within the city organization. And they're gonna be processing the information, so it's an impartial, impartial person that's gonna be, that's gonna be processing the information.
That's right.
So at any rate, um, we've been talking about this for a really long time. This was Kelly's thing, um, for the entire time she was on the council. And, um, and we find ourselves in a situation that we have, we have this quote. Um, we have the, the resources available to us. Um, we can, we can start moving forward with this if we want to. Uh, if we do move forward with this, then we would need a motion to accept or, or to reach back out to Flaherty Hood. They might need to update this a little teeny bit, because it was March 5th that they sent this to us. It's currently not March 5th. Um, but, uh, but if we, if we approve moving forward with this, then we will, we will reach out to Flaherty Hood and we will get the, uh, get the process started.
Yeah, I would move that we reach out to, there to him.
Okay. Uh, accepting the quote.
Accepting their, the quote.
Okay. Assuming it's still going. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carrie's. All right, so, will you guys reach out to Flaherty, to Brandon and see what he, see if this offer is still on the table? Sure it is. All right, so moving right on, council and staff reports. Craig, do you have anything?
Nope.
Michael?
Nope.
Nope. Tracy? I got an email from, from, uh, from Emily saying that she, that I was gonna be, she'd send me the information for the meetings for a while. Um, but that's about all that I have. I've been out of town for the best. Wow, so. Um, do you guys have anything? All right, we have completed our work for the evening. Thank you so much for your time. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.